I have a call the April Board of Commissioners meeting to order. Thank you very much. We have two items on the open agenda today. Kim Thomas will give us an overview of the FY 2022 annual and five-year plan schedule. Donna Mills would like to recognize staff members who were pivotal in bringing NRHA vaccination events for residents and others in March. And we also have items in our closed session. Before we move into the agenda, I want to point out the format for today's meeting to accommodate public access. Dial star nine to raise your hand and you'll be called on by the last four digits of your phone number. If you are called upon, please state your name and address. Staff will be conducting tours of various properties at Councilwoman Royster's request this afternoon. In addition to Councilwoman Royster, Councilwoman Johnson has also confirmed her attendance. The Virginia pilot, the new journal and guide will also be on the tour. And this is a very interesting day today. It's joyous for Phyllis, sad for the rest of us because this will be the last board meeting that she's sort of responsible for. And for the record, Phyllis has been NRHA Senior Executive Secretary for over 13 years and has served under three different executive directors: Cheryl Montgomery, John Konak, and now Ron Johnson. Johnson?
Did I miss that one?
She had the donkey task of keeping all three of us on track. All of us. And that was a lot of work. There's no counting the number of commissioner meetings she coordinated, the number of telephone calls she answered, or the number of visitors she received. We owe her a great debt for her service. Throughout it all, she displayed her own touch of friendliness, kindness, and courtesy, and brought a sense of grace to the offer. She's been a joy to be around and will be greatly missed. A small retirement event will be hosted here and details will be sent out soon. And now I'd like to invite your comments, if any, on the minutes from the March 11th board meeting, which are on pages three through 14 in your package. I'll entertain a motion. Start.
Mr. Albert, Ms. Arrington, Mr. Gresham, Ms. Perrier, Mr. Benassi, Mr. Gillard, Mr. Masachi.
Aye. All right, we'll now move on to the executive director's comments.
Thank you, Tom. Good morning, Commissioners.
Aye.
I wanted to highlight a few things for you today. The first one being that, as Don mentioned, he talked about the tours that we're going to be conducting today. We have Calvert, Young, and Tidewater today. And next Thursday, I think Oakley Dig and Cyc- yeah, Cyc- those are next Thursday. So this is, even though it was done at the request of Councilwoman Royster, it will give us the opportunity to sort of highlight some of the opportunities and challenges that we have and try to maintain the properties. We actually put together like some information sheets that we're going to be passing out, basically give a little brief history of the properties. And the bedroom size is also, we listed the REACT floors and just the annual and five-year maintenance expenses. For example, for example, like we have a Tidewater, in terms of the maintenance expenses, the five-year total is then like almost $11 million that we spent at Tidewater Cards over the past five years. So, like I said, I think especially with the press being there, you know, they have sort of realized that, you know, there are, even though there's some opportunities, and I think we'll see that when we start going to like digs and things like that, where we're sort of moving, taking properties off of a public housing platform because we realize that we just don't get enough funding to really adequately maintain the properties in the condition that they need to be in. So, I think, like I said, I think this will be a really good opportunity to tell our story and what we have to do with the property. And it sort of leads into the, we heard that President Biden had announced a couple weeks ago his infrastructure proposal, $10 trillion. And within that, he's dedicating, I think it's $213 billion toward to produce, preserve, and retrofit more than 2 million affordable and sustainable places to live, through grants, funding, tax credits, project agent rental assistance. Also, the proposal also includes $40 billion to repair public housing. So that sort of fits into sort of the theme that we want to talk about today on tour, that the backlog for public housing, this is probably only, $40 billion is only about half of the deferred maintenance that all housing authorities experience in terms of being of the deferred maintenance. I mean, we always have to make the decision on whether to fix certain things at the expense of others because we just don't really have enough money. That, the money that we get is about $1,000 per month, per month, or, I'm sorry, $1,000. I think it's $1,000 a year that we get for capital upkeep. But we only get probably, if we need a dollar, we probably only get close to about 50 cents or less. And so that additional 50, if we don't service it, adds to the deferred maintenance. So that just continues to pile up. So, there's some opportunities here. Hopefully, you know, if they can get this through the House and the Senate, infrastructure bill, and keep the tax of money that they have dedicated for public housing, I think, I think it'll help. But it's still, with the state of, you know, the public housing, it's really, it's really difficult to be able to adequately maintain. Like I said, staff does a great job in what they do, but as management, we're always having to make that decision when we get the alignment of capital fund. Do we spend a little all over the place, or do we, we sort of prioritize and try to do a large amount of renovations at once to the expense of others? So that's always the challenge that we have to go through. And the next item I wanted to bring up is, I know you've been aware of a couple of, well, we had a number of significant events that we've had in our community. And if you look closely, a number of them have involved non-residents. And this sort of ties into the whole thing with the whole public housing and the whole funding issue, in a sense that a lot of crime, or I would say a contributing factor to crime in our community, is how the public housing is built and where it's built. I mean, you talk to any police officer and they start talking about sites, mine sites, and being able to look and being able to surveil. Public housing is some of the worst areas to be able to really do proactive kinds of things in terms of foot patrol and things like that because there's so many places where if someone wants to evade security, it's easy to do because it's really, it's really hard to put eyes on the street with the term that they use in terms of that crime deterrent to be able, for people to have, be able to look to see what's going on. Public housing is not conducive to that. And also how, where it's built. Even St. Paul's, that area is a good example, is that if you look at the area, which is one of the things that we're trying to, we're trying to rectify through the St. Paul's transformation, that it's walled off the rest of the, rest of the city. You took, you take a visual look and you see how the, you got the interstate, you got Church Street, Brambleton, and it's sort of like sectioned off from everything else. I'm sure that that isn't really conducive as well to being able to have security, the police actually be able to adequately control them, with it being so isolated. There are so many things that could happen away from the public eye, where there's a lot of people transversing through the air. So, and that also goes back to funding. But one of the things that we have been doing is trying to install cameras, you know, trying to at least have some eyes out, even though it's electronic. And Karen Rose, our resource officer, has been sort of spearheading that effort. And I know she's on the, on the line, and I wanted her to provide you an update where we are with the camera installations throughout our community, the cameras.
Good morning, Commissioners and executive team. I'm going to provide a brief update on the status of our camera installations throughout public housing. Currently, our completed projects of our maintenance and management offices are Young Terrace, Calvert Square, Digtown, Oakley Forest, and the Oakley Forest FIC. All of those just mentioned are up and running and operational. I'm going to go to Calvert Square. Work is currently in progress at the Calvert Square Envision Center. We have an additional PO for cameras and panic buttons after we re-surveyed that particular facility. Also, in Calvert Square Envision Center, we have installed an Orket server, which gives us the ability to be able to log into the cameras offline. So in other words, you don't have to be in the NRHA network in order to view the cameras. This is something that we look forward to in the future because it will also give police officers the ability to monitor those cameras, to research incidents on those cameras as well. Pending right now, the startup is for fiber installation over in Calvert Square. This is going to be vital for not only the Envision Center, but the community of Calvert Square. Once the fiber installation is there, it will make sure that our systems are very clear and functioning. So that is in progress at the moment. Any questions thus far?
I have one. Can you give me Karen?
Yes, sir.
Are these cameras for crime prevention or crime solving?
They can actually serve both purposes.
I mean, what is the purpose of NRHA pitting them up?
I'm sorry, what is the purpose of NRHA? I'm sorry, it wasn't clear.
Well, okay, so if NRHA is pitting these up, is the purpose to reduce crime or to help solve the crimes that are happening in the community by non-residents?
So, number one purpose, we're able to assist the police and our staff in solving crimes. The second reason is they are a great investigative tool. They gain intel, seeing where hotspots are. It would help us better monitor these areas. They're not clearly able to be seen by police officers and the staff. So they can serve a purpose twofold. But most often, people are associating cameras with looking after the fact. But we are hoping to use them prior to, which is one of the reasons why we wanted the police department, to be able to monitor cameras as well.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. All right, any other questions before I move forward?
I have one, Karen. Alfonso Albert. Do you have, do we have a best practice or a, an example of cameras being placed in other public housing communities in partnership with the police where it demonstrated a measure of success in either of the desired functions, crime prevention, solving crime, whatever the desired function? Do we have any example where this has been implemented and then worked?
Yes, sir. I've gotten some data from Charlottesville and the Alexandra Public Housing. So every, let me first say, there's not many public housing communities that have installed their cameras and kept those types of projects going. But in my research of areas where the cameras are, they have proven to be successful. Most housing authorities, with our demographics, experienced the exact same type of problems. Because of the way our public housing is designed, it is difficult to police these areas. However, the cameras are used for surveillance, for intel gathering, and most often, you know, they're able to identify culprits that should not be in our communities and able to make arrests or ban them from the community. Now, one of the things I think is going to be really, really important for us, as we have these cameras and we can't always put our hands on the folks that should not be in our communities, if we see them on the cameras, it gives us the ability to have a case for trespassing in other crimes that they're involved in because we have evidence that is timestamped.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. All right, so I am going to move to Grandy Village. That installation for the management office and maintenance office has been completed. As of Monday, I will be going out on site to make sure the camera views and all things are completed and placed before the contractor turns over that particular project to security programs. The Grandy Village Learning Center, we hope to start that project next week. All of our parts are in, and as soon as I get with the senior construction manager, I will go ahead and initiate the paperwork and the start date for that particular area as well. So that kind of completes my summary of the camera project installations. I do want to make note that on April the 19th, I have scheduled a meeting greet with Mr. Jackson and our chief housing officer, along with the executive command of the First Precinct. During that meeting, I hope that we get acquainted and we're able to really have some frank conversations as to how NRHA and the police department can work together in trying to address some of our crime issues. I have also scheduled a meeting with the CRO unit in its entirety, with the exception of the two officers that are still on military leave. So they will able to discuss with the CRO unit and my team some opportunities for crime prevention, some opportunities for community engagement, and I will be able to report on that particular meeting when we have our April 19th meeting with Mr. Jackson. So does anyone have any questions or comments for me?
No, I think that's it. Thank you, Karen.
Thank you, Karen.
Absolutely, thank you.
Just a few other items. We know that just from some of the, you know, some of the things that we've heard and some of the best practices, we know that the best sort of approach to reduce and help to eradicate crime, it just can't, it just can't be the housing authority, it can't just be the, you know, the safety officers, and it just can't be the community. It has to be a multifaceted approach in order to solve the crime issues that, you know, that plague our communities. And with that, we've talked about, you know, public housing community itself, and our parents talked about the cameras and some of the things, some of the strategies we're working with the, with the Norfolk police. And the community part is really, really important. Couple weeks ago, I participated in a Take Back the Community March that was attended by people from all, from all over the city of Norfolk, that, I mean, there were white, black, Asian, different folks from a different community participated because they were concerned about the youth violence in our communities. And so, that kind of a, you know, those kind of efforts, coupled with what we're trying to do, I think it will have, have an impact. We had that on the 27th. This coming, this coming weekend, there's going to be an event at the Purpose Park. It's going to be part one of the Family Health and Fitness Field Day activities for the residents in our communities in that, in that area. And the whole thing is just to get, get youth on a sort of a path of being more constructive and making sort of, having a more constructive, productive future and not be, say, not be the object of the gangs of recruitment. We've had a couple, there was a couple incidents about, maybe about a month ago, that involved shooting. It was, I think it was even a week before the march that happened, as the teams with the purpose at their facility. And it, and it involved a young man who, who wanted to disassociate himself from the gang. And you know, what normally happens is if you try to do that, they're coming at you. So those are the kind of things. So in order to not have those kind of, sort of those acts of retribution for people who, you know, get in the gang and then you want to come out, we try to prevent you from even being involved in the gang. So that, that's really, you know, we're all concerned about the families, but the youth, you know, they're considered out in the community and some of the groups that I spoke with, they're considered a promise of, you know, promise of the, of the generations to come. I mean, there's a lot of potential, there's a lot of great things that are going. As a matter of fact, when I was at one of the vaccination events and there was a, there was a youth that was, there was a youth that was there and he was also volunteering at the vaccination event, the, some of the staff from the BMS, I guess he's doing so well in school there, trying to encourage him to get involved on the path to be, to get into the health field. So those are the kind of things that, you know, we try to do because the youth in our community have a lot of potential. But there's also a lot of potential to go the wrong way. So I think these community efforts are really vital for us to be able to, you know, keep the recruitment into these groups that are, you know, sort of with these gang activities, but also to sort of help just keep families know that, that they know that we're doing our, doing the best that we can to try to keep them and the community today. And then just the final thing, is that the part one of this health, I mean, the health this, this Saturday, and then there's a part two that's going to be on, on May the 1st. That's all.
Questions, comments? Mr. Jackson?
Got a question. For the tours?
Yes.
Is that, is there some kind of like attendance requirement or attendance?
Oh, yeah, we, yeah, there, I know Don is attending. There's a limit of two, and I guess you can coordinate with, coordinate with Don for the tours if you wanted to, are you going to?
Well, I wasn't, and Councilmember asked me yesterday or last night if I was attending. And I didn't know if you had gotten a second person, but if you haven't, I will.
Okay.
So if you want to go, I'll step down.
I don't know. So a council member contacted me and asked me was I going on the tour. The second time like in the last month that somebody asked me about something in NRHA that I was probably nothing about, right? So I said, yeah, I'm going. And then I watched the work session, and you say something about the tour, and I still haven't got an email saying, hey, Don, the chair and the vice chair, which is customary that I yield to, are going to this. So I told the council member I'm going, which then I started thinking to them, like, well, we might make a meeting if I'm sitting here now, and no other board member knew.
Yeah, we were going to.
No, no, I understand that, but I said, I didn't even know about the tour in NRHA period.
Yeah, we were going to try to coordinate, we forgot to mention, but we're going to try to coordinate it today.
Okay. That works for me. And my second question or point is, could we start putting some data behind our safety concerns? Because I remember vividly when John Konak was the chair or executive director, he was saying that this was non-residential situation as far as violence. And you came, Ron, and for like the first month, you said these were people in the community. To the point where some of our board members were talking about violating the Second Amendment Civil Rights and asking to remove guns from homeowners that live in our residence. And now we're back to talking about non-residents, which was always the issue. So we could start putting some data behind, I, I don't disagree anything you're saying, like gangs, rampant, et cetera, the data that kind of supports us as board members when we start having these conversations. Because I don't want to have to talk to Don or talk to Ken, and we're talking about restricting guns in the community when it's not the community, it's people coming into the community. You know, so if we can have data to support whatever we're.
Yeah, the facts help.
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, and Karen, what did you say? The facts help.
Great. Other comments, questions? Okay, then go ahead and move on to pages 15 through 18. That's the Finance and Administrative Operations.
Don?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I, um.
I didn't see you all.
No, I'm sorry, it was a little, I, I, we got the commissioner's comments.
Okay.
Where, but, but, so if I could make the commissioner's comments, please?
Sure.
Um, just from my perspective. Ron, I congratulate you and your staff for your presentation at the work session this week at City Council. I thought that you all demonstrated great staff work, you presented the information, you, you know, accepted responsibility, you know, it was a, it, I was really, I was impressed. You all had a command of the language, you related well. I thought that it accounted. It was, I think, Ron, an easy presentation, and I thought you all did an excellent job.
Thank you.
And I did a, yeah.
Hey, good. Sorry, another commissioner comment?
Are we going to talk about communication, or are we going to go talk, like, in a close or something?
Yes, we certainly can, yeah. Okay. Well, then Finance and Administrative Operations. Any pages 15 to 18? Anything on that? Unfortunately, there's not very much to come on. Okay?
So, just to, we don't have a presentation on Finance and Administrative Operations?
No, no, there was a, we pushed it to the next because of some of the other items that wanted to be covered. So that's going to be for next month, and I think there's something coming to the committee first. But there's no presentation.
All right. Development, that's pages 19 and 20, and I believe Mr. Carr, Hot Mike is coming in? You're never going to let that down.
You'll never let that go to you.
Never, never, sorry.
Good morning, Commissioners. Been a while. Just wanted to move by report, and if there are any questions, feel free to email them to me later. But I just wanted to take a minute and introduce you to our new Design and Construction Director. As you know, since about last summer, we haven't had a full-time Design and Construction Director over the summer and into the fall. We advertised, and I'm happy to say that we selected Mr. Clayton Odom III as our new director. Mr. Odom has a wealth of municipal experience. He's actually worked for the city of, the cities, rather, of Chesapeake, Norfolk. He's also, most recently, for the city of Forts. He's also had experience working with NSU and HRT. One of the other things, and one of the, really, when we were doing the interviews, it came to light that Mr. Odom has also owned and operated his own construction company. And given some of the challenges that we're having with trying to be more inclusive and also trying to incorporate more small businesses into the work program that we do, we felt Mr. Odom's experience would be more than beneficial in that effort. So in the weeks and months ahead, you'll be seeing and hearing from Mr. Odom's more. I just wanted to take a few moments to just introduce you all to Mr. Odom.
Welcome. Good morning. Welcome. All right. And we. Anything else, Mike?
No, with that, I'm done right now. I know you all have a long day, so, thank you.
Time call before you go. Just on this report, the development report, this 9630 Shore Drive, is that that four-story building that's on the curb? With the, for a long time, the elevator thing, and everybody wanted to know what it's going to be? So what is it going to be, next year?
Yes. They are apartments above, but the, the actual commercial part, we're not 100% Yes. They are apartments above, but the, the actual commercial part, we're not a hundred percent sure yet that what they were trying to do and, and just.
I'm sorry.
No, no, that's fine. You know, over, over time, they've been trying to do, uh, restaurant, a number of things. They proceeded on to do the space so they could, we'll be able to develop it. And as of this moment, I can't say what the actual commercial tenant will be yet. But as we find that out, certainly we'll let you know.
Thank you.
Tell Clayton I said he's a good politician, because he got, I turned around, he was gone.
Well, we really, we really weren't gonna do anything big today, but I will just pass it on.
I was just gonna have to look at Clayton or something.
I'll, I'll, I'll make sure. Thank you all. Have a good day.
Thank you, Mike.
All right, thanks.
Uh, now moving on to pages twenty-one to twenty-six, which is the annual plan. This, who didn't get the message about YO today? Kim, brother?
It's a good experience, it's a good experience. Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
It's great to see everyone again this month. Um, today I'm gonna do a brief overview of our fiscal year twenty-two annual and five-year plan schedule review. I just want to remind everyone that last year, when we submitted our annual and five-year plan for HUD, uh, we were able to utilize, uh, some HUD waivers that allowed us not to have to, uh, submit the plan in April of two thousand and twenty, which we would have normally did. We submitted the plan actually in October with an effective date of January one, twenty-twenty-one. Um, so it feels like we were just here a little while ago. Um, but this is our attempt to get back on track with the plan. Now, I will say in full disclosure, we are about sixty days off kilter simply because we've been waiting on our approval from the plan we submitted to HUD back in October. But we're moving forward. Um, this plan that's gonna be submitted in this year, uh, for this fiscal year will be inclusive of not only the things we committed back in October, but any new items as well, because we want to make sure we don't miss anything. Okay? So just going through the plan, um, we know that this is required under the Quality Housing and Work Responsibility Act of nineteen ninety-eight, where, uh, we are bound as a public housing authority to submit an annual and or five-year plan, uh, to HUD for, uh, for submission, um, in relation to our programs, our waitlist, our requirements and mandates, and pretty much for us to talk about the work we anticipate doing over the next one to five years. And again, this is an anticipation of the work. It does not have to be necessarily the work that has been approved by either the board or the staff. Looking at the plan schedule next slide, thank you. Um, March twenty-ninth, we began our public, uh, process of review, uh, of the draft plan that's out right now. So if you go to nraj.us/annual-plan, you'll see the draft plan for S Y twenty-two. There is a required forty-five-day public comment period that we have to associate with having this plan out. So we are in the midst of that self-review at this point and that forty-five-day, um, period in May thirteenth. Uh, May twenty-nine through the, I'm sorry, March twenty-nine through the, May seventh, I will be conducting meetings with the resident advisory board. So the resident advisory board are those, uh, tenant management and advisory council members who serve, uh, to give us feedback and information about their perceptions of what's in the plan and how they react to it if it's things that they feel need to be changed, if there are items that need to be included. So those conversations are ongoing now. And since we are still in this precarious time where we can't meet as big groups anymore, I'm kind of taking this as a three-point problem approach. We will host a public meeting. I've heard public meeting of the R A B board since last year on, uh, March, I'm sorry, I'm getting my dates mixed up, April twentieth of this month. I have also coincided that meeting to be a virtual meeting, which thanks to client services and their staff, they are providing us with tablets connected with Wi-Fi, we're free, to give, not loan, but give to our members who are participating. So if they're not comfortable meeting in person, they can meet virtually. And we're also gonna go back to some good old pick up the receiver and make some phone calls and just talk through things with folks to get feedback, because I have to capture those comments from the resident advisory board as part of the totality of the plan process. On May thirteenth, when we get right back here, this will be your, uh, public hearing. So folks who want to provide information about the plan, the draft plan at that point, that information will be entertained and collected. Again, this is the process by which, uh, I think as a board, you've all decided that if something is said that is misleading or outright untrue, that we will stand on record to correct that information in real time and not let it fester on without, without being addressed. On June tenth, I'll be back. I'm coming back to you to present to you the final draft of the plan. So we'll incorporate public comments, R A B board comments, and then any concerns or comments from staff or even the board in general. And then June fifteenth, the plan will be submitted to HUD for review and approval. That takes about seventy days. So we're looking at about, I'm sorry, September timeframe for that plan to become effective. And that would take us to June thirtieth, twenty-two. Okay?
Give me, Kim, do we have this PowerPoint?
Yes, yes.
What page is it?
Uh, twenty-four?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-two.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm done.
Okay.
Actually, page twenty-four.
I told you, Joe. Thank you, Don, don't let me hang up.
Thank you. No problem. Just a few callouts, the annual plan period again, um, it's technically July first through, uh, twenty-twenty-one through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two, although a late submission will get us into that timeframe a few months, a couple months late. The five-year plan covers January first, twenty-twenty-one through June thirtieth, two thousand, two, twenty-twenty-five. And again, it's important to distinguish that the five-year plan and the annual plan is just one combined plan. It is a, uh, look at what we plan to do as an agency and it could force the initiative that we want to have addressed within that five-year timeframe. The A P A, or administrative, the, uh, I'm sorry, administrative plan and admission and continued occupancy plans, these are the plans for both the, uh, Section Eight program and public housing. Those updates are included in this plan as well, so that, that will be some key area and key language that we will see some updates and changes. We will also be updating our language on Section Three policy as the final rule came out last year from HUD, as well as the economic inclusion activities that N R A J and the city of Norfolk have agreed that they want to enter into and try to align as we continue to do the work. Capital fund updates will be, uh, provided as well and program updates as needed. These are things like, um, like the scattered site plan. We, I know last year we talked about selling off some of the houses that we had that were part of our scattered site initiative. Um, one of the other things that'll be included is the information about HUD passing the bill that requires public housing authorities to address carbon monoxide detectors in use. So that information will be updated as part of program plans as well. And I just wanted to reiterate, public comments this year, we are really trying to make sure we get the word out to everyone we can about providing public comments. We know it is crucial when we are really attached with making some really, really big changes to this plan. So we have made sure that we kind of stretch the gamut of how we communicate with the public. We are providing a call-in number for folks to actually call in and leave a message related to the public plan. We're encouraging them to leave a contact number for them to have someone call them back so that we can discuss what they, they are concerned about or want to leave a comment about. We have an online survey that will allow folks to also leave information, um, about the plan, the draft plan. And our communications team has developed a very nice direct mail or postcard that is going to be sent to all low-income public housing, Section Eight, and project-based voucher participants households that will give them an information about leaving public comments and also participating on the, uh, public hearing, uh, session on May thirteenth on our May board meeting. So if all goes well, we will have some robust, robust conversation and the ability for people, for folks around us, whether it's residents or our colleagues, constituents, et cetera, to really provide their input. We don't want to shut down the process of, of involving the public in this plan in particular. And with that, I think that is it unless I have any questions.
Questions or comment?
I, I have.
Go ahead.
But I defer to Mr. Allison.
No, no, go ahead.
You were going on though.
I always am.
I'm going on, so, um, I, I'm, I apologize to them because I have not read this plan and I will. Having said that, um, I, more details might be helpful to me.
Okay.
I mean, I don't, are there, I don't know what the, the, you know, the updated language, I mean, are there significant changes in this plan? What should I be looking for? Um, you know, what are the updated goals? I mean, and so I don't know whether we'll get that in May on the PowerPoint like we normally do.
Okay.
Um, so I just am struggling a little bit with that plan.
Okay.
And my second thing is I'm struggling with it. Not that I, you know, not that I'm, if I, as a commissioner, am struggling with it, I, I would imagine that the community at large and residents and, and just the public struggle with it. I mean, I have to dig through this plan to, to find these changes.
Sure.
Um, I, um, I think it's cumbersome.
So, um, to address that Suzanne, I have created a document that's being sent out to the resident advisory board. So what I can do is ask communications to post it where this annual draft plan lives right now. And it actually goes through kind of step-by-step, these are the things that are changes. Um, because, because I have to, uh, kind of condense what would have been eight meetings into one hour to two-hour-long session with the group, um, it's an over, it provides an overview of the things that need. So I can get with communications and have them post that as well and, and also provide it to the commissioners. Thank, thank you, no problem.
And you can totally do that eight days and one hour thing, I know.
Yes, sir.
You done, Suzanne?
I am.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to say, Emily, I, I guess I've said this enough rapidly, but I want to say publicly that, uh, I really think you're doing an outstanding job, uh, and, and I say that because I've sit through a few of the annual plan revisions, changes every day, and, uh, you've managed to keep the process almost in, uh, in really trying time in the midst of, first of all, uh, St. Paul's transformation, which was launched, uh, during a presentation of annual plan and an update, I understand. And then, uh, continued through COVID, making adjustments to new organizations coming in, different kind of work coming in that maybe wasn't a, a part of our original, not the plan, I, I know it wasn't the part, but, but I just feel like, uh, you're doing an outstanding job with this and I really appreciate the work that you're doing and have put in on it.
Thank you. That's much appreciated.
Oh, I'm just gonna echo Chairman Howard's comments. I think everyone can agree, especially Delphine. I feel like I'm a demolition police. So when I first came here, I was, we were tug-of-war with those demolition队. So I have been keeping up with the plan and just to see how she incorporated it. To be determined means a lot to me rather than January twenty-four, you know, so as a demolition police, we're gonna give you two minutes.
And I just want to say that this is the collective effort of staff who are required to provide information. The backdoor conversations that I have are very, um, sort of look forceful. So it, okay, I think that as an organization and as staff members, we now appreciate the fact that this is not routine and we should not get into the habit of just making this a copy and paste activity. But it needs to reflect what we actually wanted to say and what we wanted to do. Um, because at some point, whether it's the motherland and high water gardens or the HUD professionals in D C, somebody's gonna come back to this plan and say, that's not what you're saying, so you can't do it. And it is very painful to try to change this plan. Personally, it's painful because it takes a lot of work. So I'd rather, rather us to work hard than begin and then get it right. But thank you, because we do feel a lot of time to making this plan make sense.
I think we started to get a little sense of that when the plan was unfolded at, at Crop Center.
Right.
Uh, we got a little sense of, so thank you though.
No problem. Thank you.
Any comments? Questions? Thank you, Kim.
Understood.
Uh, now we'll go to page twenty-seven and Miss Mills will tell us about the vaccination.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
Um, it's my pleasure this morning to talk to you about the vaccination event that we held in the month of March. We talked to you previously about the ten prior meetings. Uh, this is on page twenty-seven of your packet. Um, but I wanted to have both Eila Smith, if you'll come up here and Kim Thomas.
Yes.
Uh, these are the driving forces that the high need to get. Uh, they have worked tirelessly with our partners to get these events coordinated and to get the number of not only residents and staff, but the public vaccinated. And I am one of them. I've had both of my vaccinations, thankfully, um, and strongly encourage everybody to do that. Um, but I'm gonna let both Kim and Eila talk briefly about where we are at and what's been done. And then Rod's gonna come up and present some of the, um, recommendations. Kim?
Thank you. Those are good. So, um, Eila and I embarked on some grand ideas, uh, about a month and a half ago. And what we saw was that we knew our residents, while it is important for information to go about, go out about what is available in the community, sometimes you have to narrowly define communities. And with a lot of challenges here as a housing authority in particular, we know we have lost our transportation program. We didn't want our communities to be on the receiving end of what's not available. So while there are massive, uh, vaccination events happening throughout the city of Norfolk, they still didn't present themselves in a way that our community members were able to access it. So we began having conversations, actually with two major partners. One was the Hague Pharmacy. The other was E V M S under the leadership of Dr. Cynthia Romero. And with those conversations, we were able to really come up with a program that was gonna allow us to offer vaccines in, and around our community. And when we say around, I think Eila's rule was less, knows more than two blocks from where our communities were. So our first attempt was early May and we brought, uh, eleven hundred vaccines to March, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, look, May, March, it's all.
Never.
In early March, we bought eleven hundred vaccines to the Calvert Square and Vision Center. So if anyone saw the news coverage in the moment, it was like, yeah, look at that, that's beautiful. There was a lot of work put into that, but we were intentional in making sure that those vaccines were available to our community in real time. And with the, most two, at least of the three vaccines, there has to be a follow-up vaccine. So we did move it to Russner for the second dose event. Um, and there were some challenges there. Bigger thing was actually more challenges of being in a larger facility. But in that iteration, we were actually able to bring about seventeen hundred first and second dose vaccines to the community. Wonderful thing. We plan on continuing the partnerships with both organizations. We are actually gonna be a little more deliberate in how we bring vaccines to the community now. We are actually working on a plan that's gonna allow us to go door to door. So we are excited that as we speak to residents, we engage and understand the needs for residents, what they need specifically, that we are able to work with partners who are able to adjust. So I'm thankful that we were able to provide this resource. It takes a lot of work. We've had some great volunteers to help us along the way. And every indication that we give from the folks that we are able to serve tells us that we're doing the right thing.
So we hear from the doctor, doctor.
Thank you. Soon and very soon. That simultaneously, while we, Kim and I were working on bringing the Calvert event to fruition, Lucy Major and client services staff were actually working with the local health department. And that was our effort to bring vaccination clinics directly to the liberalized communities. Uh, we knew it needed to look different. We knew we couldn't, um, hassle or burden our residents with the pre-registration process, uh, signing up. Uh, so we knew that we needed to make sure that this was, uh, accessible and then onsite for these residents, as well as that staff was present to provide. for these residents, as well as that staff was present to provide levels of support. Uh, with registration, with just going over the information, that group received a Moderna shot. Uh, there were a lot of questions onsite and even leading up to it. Um, so through those efforts, we hosted, uh, first-dose clinics on March 27th and March 28th. And we went to each of the mid-rise communities, three each day. Uh, and we have administered 223 first doses of the Moderna in each of the communities. Uh, well, and through all six communities, uh, some communities.
I'm sorry, how many doses was that?
223. Uh, some communities, uh, like Partraia, we did 52 residents out of that community alone. So some of these, uh, communities are seeing about 50% of their population coming down and actively, uh, participating in these clinics. We know, uh, we had a lot of residents that wanted, uh, information so that they could have some time to talk to their doctors. So that we know when we go back for second doses at the end of April, we will have more first doses to administer just based on their comfort and, uh, their increased knowledge about it. So, um, I, we, this was, uh, definitely a joint effort amongst everyone, property management, site staff, resident services, uh, client services. Uh, but we're out here and we're actually pretty excited to see it. We've had a lot of good moments through these clinics. We know what the pandemic meant to us. We knew the limitations that it presented to us. But, um, we got a lot of tried mind stories, uh, about kind of what this vaccination means to many people. So, um, I'll say for me personally, when I first started, it was like, I just gotta get this to the residents. Um, but that first vaccination clinic, it was like, no, this means way more. This is, this is bigger than just, um, making sure that they have access and are aware and are provided equal opportunities. Uh, this is about, uh, for many, a second chance. Uh, this is ice, this is, uh, new freedom, new, new adventures, travel. Uh, so we've heard it all and we've witnessed a lot of things through it. So, April 22nd, second doses in mid-rises. And, um, Kim and I are working on door-to-door strategies.
This is a real field good story.
I think a brain field good story is.
Hit me on that one.
We can do the Aretha Franklin, Dr. Field, Miss Field, do it, say.
Well, to both, uh, Hila and Kim, we have a certificate of recognition to give to them. For your outstanding dedication to the coordination of the class of the COVID-10 vaccine vaccination clinics at Calvert Division Center and Rusner Middle School, Northridge, Virginia, March 7th and March 28th, 2020. And having to volunteer under their direction, uh, for whatever they need me to do, I can, I can really attest to the fact that how well-coordinated the events were from not having basically that kind of background, but having the background of being able to bring different, uh, partners together. When you have folks with a medical school, you have, uh, medical students who came to volunteer. They, they weren't ordered to be there, they, they were, they volunteered to be there. As well as other volunteers, they did a wonderful job to be able to bring this all together. Like they attested to how it really helped impact communities that throughout the pandemic were sort of left behind, even though they experienced the higher, highest, uh, some of the highest infection rate in terms of the virus, the, uh, vaccinations were sort of hard to be able to get to those there. If it weren't for those, their effort, there's no telling how those communities would, would be today. So we really rec, uh, really appreciate everything that you all have done. Here's your certificate, Hila.
Thank you.
Can you turn around and present it so we can, uh?
Okay. Okay.
Picture of what, what's going on here?
With your mask on, Roger.
Yeah, I'm giving.
Wait, you need to run in front of me, yes.
All right, one, two, three, one, two, three.
Donna did something, didn't she?
I just volunteered, I did what Kim and Hila told me to do.
Oh, you were voluntold.
Yes, sir.
If you turn those over, you'll see that you have, uh, three days vacation on the half.
He's really strong, yeah.
Yeah, you really deserve a lot more than that.
Well, that would be, we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Y'all go to Mexico.
Now, it is interesting that when you see reports of these vaccinations, almost everyone who talks about it, it's about the anxiety, not so much about the actual shot of the arm. As they pointed out, what they're hearing back is, what it, what it means is, like you said, freedom. The, the idea of the anxiety going away with this. And so really a great job, they did a wonderful job. Yeah. Again, given all the press that you've heard about how difficult it is to get on the list, get a shot.
Well, the thing about, that was in March, shows early in March. Seems a lot easier now. It wasn't so easy in March.
No, no, no. Uh, do we have any new business? Hearing none? Uh, then we'll go, any comments on, uh, the committee meeting notes? Which we'll start on page 28? Nothing there? Okay, uh, any, any comments before we move into the closed session? Close? Since I can find the thing on my, oh, yeah. Bear with me. All right, I have it. And it was nice enough not to say, okay, Boomer. Uh, being resolved that the authority will convene in a closed meeting pursuant to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act as amended, the act, to discuss the following matter, which is specifically exempted from public disclosure by the code section referred to below. One, consultation with the authority's legal counsel regarding probable litigation requiring the provision of legal advice by counsel as authorized by Section 2.2, Dex 3711 dot A dot 7 of the act. May I have a motion?
So move.
Thank you.
Ms. Carnes?
Mr. Albert?
Aye.
Ms. Arrington? Aye. Mr. Gresham?
Aye.
Ms. Purrier? Aye. Mr. Benassi?
Aye.
Mr. Dillard?
Aye.
Mr. Musashi?
Aye.
Uh, as our normal procedure, we'll take a few minutes to organize everything.
Chairman, we do have a hand raised.
Oh, I'm sorry.
For, um, public comment.
Okay, uh, we don't have to redo this again. Yes, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I see we have a hand raised, caller ending in 1812. Caller, your line is unmuted. Can you please state your name?
Good afternoon, my name is Nakira Johnson, and I live in Fairmont Park in Norfolk.
Sorry, can you please repeat your name?
Nakira Johnson.
Nakira Johnson, from Fairmont Park.
Yes.
All right, um, Ms. Johnson, please go ahead and state your question or comment.
Um, I just had two quick questions about the cameras being put downtown. Uh, one would be where the residents notified that there would be cameras in the neighborhood. And I guess the second one would be what is being done to combat the possibility of overpolicing when cameras like these are put in neighborhoods such as downtown? Because as you guys mentioned, it's not necessarily the residents at fault, but if there is that constant sense of surveilling, overpolicing is like right behind that, and that's been proven. So I guess that would be the two questions.
Great, I guess that would be Karen?
Yeah. Karen, I don't know if she's still, is she still on the line?
I am, sir. Uh, good morning, ma'am. Um, thank you for your question.
Morning.
Um, to.
No problem.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, so prior to, um, camera installations, um, even being initiated in our communities, um, there was resident meetings, um, and correspondence with other residents, um, that live on the exterior of public housing as well as in public housing, on installing cameras. And most of the residents, um, that attended our, our meetings, uh, were all for the cameras. Um, we do want to keep in mind that it is, it is difficult for our, our residents to reside in public housing, um, as things happen without being overpoliced. So I think the cameras were put out as a good opportunity, uh, to lessen some of that fear of overpolicing, uh, because we're able to view and monitor the communities without the physical presence of a police officer. And I, I hope that answers your question.
Yes, ma'am, yes, it does, and I appreciate that. And just, uh, just a short follow-up question. So will the cameras be constantly monitored or will this be, uh? I know you mentioned that the intention was to solve crime. So will it be a constant monitoring situation or a checking when something has gone awry situation?
So a little bit of both. There would not be 24/7 monitoring. However, uh, mass security staff, uh, management of those properties, and the police officers will have the ability to view those cameras. So they would not be monitored at this time 24 hours. However, during peak times, uh, like I said, the police department, uh, mass staff, um, and management staff have the ability to sporadically look at those cameras. Um, the goal is to, uh, try to get a sense of what's going on in the community before something happens. Uh, based on the expertise that we have, we can look at certain components of what's going on in the community and be able to assess that, which will help us better to deploy the police where they're needed.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Anyone else, Kim?
No one has their hand raised, but we may want to provide the prompt again to remind them of how to raise their hand.
Yes, if anyone, uh, on the line wishes to, uh, make a comment or question, dial star nine to raise your hand, and you'll be called on by the last four digits of your phone number. Once you are called upon, please state your name and address for the record.
I'm gonna go check the lobby.
Okay.
While we wait for folks to raise their hand.
All right.
We have no one in the lobby, and we have no hand raised.
All right, then, we will, uh, proceed with our closed session if that's okay. Again, we'll take about a few minutes, uh, to get everything square. Uh, reminding you that you are not to discuss any business during this, uh, period. Read this, now. All right. Whereas the authority has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2 Dex 3712 dot D of the 1950 Code of Virginia as amended requires the certification by this authority that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore, upon a motion duly made and seconded, being resolved that the authority hereby certifies that to the best of each commissioner's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law where heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting; and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the authority. May I have a motion?
So move.
A second?
Second.
Ms. Carnes?
Mr. Albert?
Aye.
Ms. Arrington? Aye. Mr. Gresham?
Aye.
Ms. Purrier? Aye. Mr. Benassi?
Aye.
Mr. Dillard?
Aye.
Mr. Musashi?
Aye.
All right, we are now back in open session. Uh, Ms. Moore, is there anyone on the line?
Uh, there is no one on the line.
All right. So without further ado, I will call the April meeting to adjourn.
Adios.